The Town of Plainville, established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Plainville Town Council meeting. This evening is Tuesday, January 18, 2022, at 7:00 PM. If you'll all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilman Zerro is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you very much this evening. We are honored to have firefighters here. There's some folks on our fire service that will be receiving some special recognition awards. So at this time, I am going to turn the meeting over to Councilman Underwood, and he is going to do the honors, so.
Welcome, everyone. It's a nice crowd here tonight. Before we start the fire service awards, I'd like to pay tribute to four firefighters that have passed in 2021. First one would be Bill Tai, 40 years of service; Bruce Bowe, 30 years of service; John Megan, 35 years of service; and John Borey, 35 years of service. That's a lot of service. At this time, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on these four people, a moment of silence, and then we're going to go into an attitude of prayer. Let us pray. All-powerful Father, I ask you to look upon the earth and bless your servants, who are members of the Plainville firefighting community. I ask that you bless and honor their willingness to sacrifice themselves for the sake of others. Willingness to sacrifice themselves for the sake of others. Give those heroes the protection and strength they need to carry out their civic function in a way that honors and upholds your holy name. Amen. God bless the Plainville Fire Department. At this time, I'm going to go up to the podium. When I call your name, please come to the front and receive your award. And please remain standing so we can get some pictures. Appreciate it. The first award goes to Christopher Centarelli, for five years of service. I don't know if Christopher knows it. I believe I'm related to him. My wife is related to you, Julia. Congratulations. The next award goes to Brian Roper, 10 years of service. Douglas Macarelli, 10 years of service. And if I pronounce your name wrong, I don't give you a kick when you get up here, all right? Douglas Macarelli, 10 years. Not here. Felipe Brocher. Phil Broschu. Did I pronounce that right? 15 years of service?
That sounds good.
Paul Broschu. Tom O'Chinney Jr., 15 years of service. Stephen Chapman, 20 years of service. John Myska, 20 years. Antonio Labella, 25 years of service. Timothy Lennon, 30 years. Not here. Adrian Paradise, 30 years of service. Thank you for your service. And Douglas Doughty, 45 years. Thank you, everyone, very much. Appreciate your service.
You're going to take the photo? Yeah? So you all are certainly welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. However, I understand that probably many of you have other things you need to do. But I do want to express the most sincere gratitude to our firefighters. Being a volunteer firefighter is a dedication that many will not take on. I also want to thank your family and friends for all of the support that you continuously give to these gentlemen and women who are there when we need them. And we couldn't do anything without you. It can't be overstated enough how much we appreciate everything that you do for our town and for your service to the fire department. So congratulations to all of those that reached those milestones, and thanks very much for everything. We'll just take a brief pause while the families move along.
Thank you much.
Okay, we'll resume the rest of our meeting. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing. And at this point, I will ask our town clerk to please read the notice, if you would.
Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, January 18, 2022, in the council chambers of the municipal center to consider the following: An additional appropriation of $600,000 to the Capital Projects Fund. Copies of said additional appropriation are available for public inspection in the office of the town clerk during normal business hours, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 13th day of January, 2022.
Thank you very much. Okay, Robert, would you give us just a very quick overview of what this is for those that are probably listening and watching before we open the public hearing?
Yes, thank you very much. The Capital Projects budget for the current fiscal year, which is fiscal year '22, totals $1,757,000. That budget is funded through several different light items, one of which is the general fund unassigned fund balance. The general fund unassigned balance that was approved during the budget process totals $869,150. This evening, what's being proposed is that in order to get that money into the capital improvement budget, it has to be appropriated through this process. This is something that's generally a procedural matter because it was discussed at length during the budget process. And this evening, we're proposing that $600,000 be transferred into the capital improvement from the unassigned fund balance. Why $600,000 rather than the whole $869,000? Is that the town charter limits the amount that the town council can, at one time, appropriate unassigned fund balance to 1% of the town budget. 1% of the town budget is somewhere around $630,000. So we just rounded it off to $600,000 this evening. And there'll be a future appropriation after a public hearing to consider the remaining amount of $269,150.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the explanation. I will open the public hearing up. I'll do this. There are no members of the public here to speak, but I will go through the motion. Does anybody wish to speak? Nobody's here. Okay, having no speakers, I will close the public hearing and move on to minutes of our previous meeting. May I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Motion to approve January 3, 2022 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Any post? Motion carries? Announcements and reports? Does anybody have any announcements or reports to make this evening?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Rosemary.
Last week, I attended as liaison the Library Board of Trustees meeting. Their main agenda item was a review of the budget as proposed by the library director. They went through every category of the budget very thoroughly and did pass it. And of course, that's going on to the town manager and then ultimately to us. But it was very helpful and very meeting.
That's it, Rosemary?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report tonight? Okay, moving along, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any reappointments or new appointments to boards and commissions? None? Okay, on we go. Board of Ed, there's nobody to report. The town attorney, there's no report from him. And so, Robert, we're on to the report of the town manager.
Yes, I have several items, the first of which is the Willowbrook Estates Sewer Agreement. The Willowbrook Estates subdivision is located at 265 Unionville Avenue on the border between Plainville and Farmington. It will be an active adult community consisting of 61 homes, with 34 of them being in Plainville. Of these 34 homes, nine of them will be connected to the Plainville sewer system located on Unionville Avenue. Because of the topography of the parcel, the remaining 25 homes in Plainville are proposed to be connected to the Farmington sewer system. Town staff has met with Farmington town staff to negotiate an agreement to allow for these Plainville homes to utilize their sewer system. Under the proposed agreement, Plainville will pay to Farmington the connection charges and sewer permit fees totaling $29,517.90. This amount is based upon the expectation that the average daily sewer flow shall not exceed 2,900 gallons. The town of Farmington will bill Plainville a sewer user charge using the same method as to what is charged to similar Farmington homes. That fee currently stands at $321 per year. The sewer lines in the Willowbrook Estates will be privately owned and the responsibility of the homeowners association. Plainville will collect a $3,000 connection charge for each of the 25 units and will also bill for a sewer user charge at the current minimum charge of $415,992. Excuse me, $415.92. The sewer user charge will change from year to year based upon any changes to the minimum charge as approved by the Plainville Town Council. Construction of these homes are expected to begin this summer, and a copy of the proposed agreement has been reviewed by the town attorney and is similar to previous sewer agreements between Farmington and Plainville. We have about four or five of them, believe it or not. Town staff is recommending that the town council authorize the town manager to execute the sewer agreement between the town of Plainville and the town of Farmington regarding 265 Unionville Avenue Willowbrook Estates development. And there is an item under New Business regarding these recommendations. The only thing that I would add is that what Farmington is charging us and what they would charge in sewer user charges, the town of Plainville will be collecting more than that amount as well as the annual sewer user charge as well. And that's based upon what we charge in comparison to Farmington. And part of that is because of the administration of this particular sewer user agreement. Creates some hours and burden on our staff. And so, the feeling is that we would treat them as if they were part of the Plainville sewer system as well as far as these charges are concerned. The next item I have is the draft personnel policy discussion. The town of Plainville adopted a Personnel Policy Manual for town employees in the early 1970s. The purpose of the manual is to provide employees and applicants with important information concerning employment with the town of Plainville, to provide a uniform policy for handling all non-union personnel matters and to handle and clarify situations applicable to all employees, including union personnel unless stated otherwise in their collective bargaining agreements. Human Resources Director Stacy Buden has proposed updating the Personnel Policy to reflect changes that have occurred in both federal and state law. It has also been updated to reflect some of the changes that have also occurred to benefits that are currently provided to town employees. The draft has been reviewed by Attorney Ken Weinstock as well. This is the first comprehensive update to the Personnel Policy Manual in many years, and a copy of the draft was distributed to the town council members for your review. Town staff will be soliciting town council feedback on the proposed draft over the next month with the goal of having it adopted at a future meeting. There's no timetable for that at this time. If desire to work session to review the draft and respond to questions can be scheduled as well. No action on the draft Personnel Policy Manual is being requested this evening. It's just an introduction of it. It's relatively comprehensive. I encourage council members to read it, become familiar with it. If you have any questions, feel free to get back to us. And if you have a free question, we could hold a work session as well. But we'll prompt you. If you don't hear back from me in a week or so, we'll prompt you and ask you if you have anything for us, and then move on from there. Is that okay?
Robert, the hard copy that we got tonight, does it show what the changes are? Or is it just this is the new recommendation versus what we had?
This is the new recommendation. We could give you a redline copy if you'd like to see that.
I was just curious. Have there been a lot of changes or not many? Or not knowing what it was before, to look at it now is a little...
Yeah. Is there a lot of changes? There's... No, not a lot. I think a redline... We could provide you with a redline copy. Might be a little hard to follow with the redline, but you'll get the gist of it.
I'd like a redline copy, too. Thank you, Robert.
Yep. Thank you.
Let me just write that down. Okay, the next item I have is the American Rescue Plan Act Planning Committee update. The Department of Treasury released the final rule for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds of the American Rescue Plan Act. The final rule provides clarity and broadens in select categories eligible uses. The final rule takes effect on April 1, 2022. However, it does afford recipients to take advantage of any new provisions prior to the effective date. A key change is the potential calculation for revenue loss. Municipalities have two options for how to determine their amount of revenue loss. Recipients must choose one of the two options and cannot switch between these approaches after an election is made. Recipients may elect what they call a standard allowance of $10 million to spend on government services through the period of performance. Under this option, which is newly offered in the final rule, Treasury presumes that up to $10 million in revenue has been lost due to the public health emergency, and recipients are permitted to use that amount and not to exceed the awarded amount to fund what they term government services. All recipients may elect to use the standard allowance as opposed to calculating loss revenue using a formula. Electing the standard allowance does not increase or decrease the recipient's total allocation. Under this option, Plainville could choose to have a standard deduction of our entire allocation of $5.2 million because it is under the $10 million standard deduction... Standard allowance, excuse me. This would allow the town more flexibility in the use of funds. The ARPA committee is expected to finalize their recommendations in the next several weeks. A public hearing on their recommendations is being planned for February 22, 2022, the town council meeting to be held that evening. At that point, before that meeting, we will publish notice of that. We'll publish what the committee is recommending to be used and that the council, or at least the committee, is recommending to use the standard allowance to access the funds rather than try to fit it under, in some instances, relatively narrow categories as far as use is concerned. It allows a lot more flexibility. And as the town manager, I believe it will benefit the Plainville taxpayers a lot more under that particular scenario than to try to fit it under the narrowly narrow categories. So we'll explain more of that, assuming that the committee makes the recommendation at the February 22 Town Council meeting and give the public the opportunity to respond as well.
Okay.
Town Council Board of Education Joint Fiscal Year '23 Budget Meeting. The Town Council and the Board of Education will be conducting a joint virtual meeting to hear a presentation from the superintendent of schools and myself as the town manager for the fiscal year '23 budget outlook. Virtual meeting will be held tomorrow evening, January 19, beginning at 6:00 PM. Residents can view this meeting on YouTube, and there's a link to that meeting. You know how to access that meeting. I won't repeat what's on here because it's a bunch of gibberish to a certain degree. You'd rather go online and just click the link rather than try to write it down. So the joint meeting agenda, along with the link to the meeting, can also be found on the town website at www.plainvillect.com. I know there's probably a couple of council members checking that right now to see if that's there, so I like it. Next item I have is COVID-19 update. As of last Thursday, all but one town in Connecticut were listed in the red category as exceeding 15 persons per 100,000 population testing positive for COVID-19 over the last two weeks. It is currently anticipated that infections will begin to decline in Connecticut over the next two weeks, although I've been told by some that that might be overly optimistic. The town currently has an ample supply of N95 masks available to Plainville residents. Residents can contact the town manager's office at 860-793-0221, extension 8701, to arrange to pick up a supply of these masks. They're also available through Ron Divert, our emergency management coordinator. And we were just informed today that the federal government is allowing people to get free at-home COVID-19 tests. Every home in the U.S. is eligible to order four free at-home COVID-19 tests. The tests are completely free. Orders would usually ship in seven to 12 days. So if you order it today, you might not get it for a week, maybe two. And then you could order the test now so that you could have them when you need them. We did put this on our town webpage. You can link to the order. So we recommend people, if you're looking to get a test, at least have one in hand. This is one way you can access getting free test kits. The other item I have for this evening is the financial dashboard. The financial dashboard, a copy of it, for the first six months of the fiscal year was included in the meeting information package and has also been posted on the town website. I'll briefly go through it. Things are looking relatively positive through the first six months of the year. What you will see is as far as expenditures are concerned, and again, this is through December 31, total budget of $63.9 million. We've spent through the end of this December about $34.6 million. That's 54.13%. The two-year average is 52.01%, but I would point out that because of COVID, last year's expenditures through this period of time was skewed, you know, pretty much because we didn't spend as much in the COVID year. We were spending more money on items such as... We had lower costs due to COVID expenditures, transfers to COVID funds, and getting some additional revenues from the federal government. So last year, we were showing at this time, you know, we spent about 50%. But the year before is probably more indicative. We spent during the six months somewhere around 53.41%. So if you take it two years ago, we're pretty close to, you know, a normal year. So we don't anticipate that the indication that we're a little bit above the two-year average is really because of the anomaly that happened last year. And that goes the same as far as the general government budget is concerned. We've spent $14.25 million out of a $24 million budget. That's 59% that's spent. Two-year average is 55%. Some of that is COVID. Some of that also is because this year, we made our defined benefit payment in January, where in the past, we made our defined benefit contribution. And that includes both the town and some employees of the Board of Education. We generally did that in July, but this year, we did it in January. That's a $1 million swing all by itself. So we're still spending that $1 million, but we spent it, actually, we spent a little bit ahead of time in the past year as we paid it a little bit later. So that skews it a little bit. But again, on the town side and on the Board of Education side, we feel very comfortable that we're staying within our budgetary numbers at this point in time. As far as police overtime is concerned, we spent 63.7% of the budget with 50% of the year gone. That's a little bit behind last year's, last two years' average. So we're about $9,000 ahead of the two-year average. Roadways overtime is about $3,000, almost $4,000 over the last two years. We do a lot of work in-house with the leaves and as well as the road bond program. So that's not necessarily alarming as far as I'm concerned. We're a little bit ahead as far as buildings and grounds overtime. We are behind on roadways snow overtime, meaning that we, you know, the first six months through December 31, we spent $3,100 compared to $12,000 as far as the two-year average. I think we did a pretty good catch-up during the first couple of weeks in January. So I expect the January figures, when they come out, will bring that, will get us up closer to two-year average, if not even a little bit ahead of the two-year average. And that's the same for the buildings and grounds snow overtime. So we're running behind as of the first six months, but it seems like we're playing a little bit of a catch-up during the first several weeks of January. As far as municipal solid waste is concerned, we continue to run above our two-year average in terms of tonnages. But I will tell you that we're a little bit closer. Right now, the difference is, in the first six months, is about 105 tons. In the first five months, the tonnage difference was a little bit larger than that. So maybe we'll get closer to the two-year average as we go forward. I will tell you that as far as recycling is concerned, we are running a little bit above our two-year average, but the recycling costs are way down compared to what we have budgeted. So we're projecting potential savings in recycling alone to be about $85,000 by the time we get out to the end of the fiscal year. Are there any questions with regards to the expenditures summaries? If not, we have revenues. Our revenues, we've collected 57.3% of our revenues. Two-year average is about 59%. And as far as current taxes are concerned, we've collected 67%. Our two-year average is 67.66%. So we feel comfortable as far as that's concerned. No further changes to the anticipated fund balance at this point in time. We've listed some of the additional appropriations that have been made as well as what was appropriated to cover the fiscal year '22 budget. And in there, you can see the CIP contribution of $869,150, which is, $600,000 of it is under consideration this evening for the transfer to the CIP. There's no questions on the revenues. We go to the special funds. Recreation fund expenditures are starting to catch up with the two-year average. Again, we have the anomaly of COVID and the fact that that has greatly impacted both our expenditures and revenues, you know, with regards to the recreation fund. We're running a little bit closer to the two-year average on the expenditures and a little bit over the two-year average on the revenues. But again, that's... You know, it's hard to make those comparisons in these times. it's hard to make those comparisons in these times. With regards to the Robertson Airport budget, we are, you know, we're within our operating budget numbers. A major portion of that $90,000 budget on the operating side is the amount that we pay in lieu of taxes. That payment is generally made in January. So, and in fact, I think it was paid in January already, but it's not reflected in this because this is only through December 31. Capital and other expenses, we've spent about $189,000. Although, our fund balance right now stands at a little bit over $600,000, so we're in good shape as far as the budget is for the Robertson Airport. As far as the Water Pollution Control Facility operating budget, right now, we're showing expenditures at 65.27%. Two-year average is 55%. I did ask Joe Aloso to, you know, give me a little bit of an explanation as to why those percentages are a little bit high. Some of it, again, relates to COVID and the timing of expenditures. Last year, we did not encumber some of these dollars, where he encumbered them this year. Last year, we paid as we went along. This year, he encumbered dollars. So, the encumbered dollars are showing as spent. And that's why that percentage looks a little bit higher. He is still anticipating that we will have a slight surplus, a budget surplus on the expenditure side this year of about, he's projecting about, let's see what he said. A small surplus at the end of the year. So, maybe, you know, $10,000, $20,000. So, he's expecting that, you know, while it looks like it's high, a lot of it is because more money has been encumbered this year than in previous years. On the revenue side, we received about 95% compared to 97% on user charges. With regards to the library, are pretty much in line on the expenditure side. Revenue side, some of the, you know, a good portion of the revenues comes from the general fund. The reason why we're running a little bit behind has to do with some of the investment funds for the trust funds. We hope that'll catch up before the end of the fiscal year. But that makes up a relatively minor amount of the revenues for the library budget. Not many changes in the major projects budget. Phosphorus removal, we spent $20,000. Still running with a project balance of about $841,000. That was really the only expenditure other than some expenditure on town line road reconstruction, but that's all done with grant funds. About $20,000 was spent in the current fiscal year, or, excuse me, in December. We still have, and that only makes up 86.76% of the budget. So, there's some final work to be done in the springtime as far as that's concerned. We still have surpluses in the road bond fund. We still have surplus in the Wheeler School Project as well. You see the balance in turf fund and ARPA funding. We're listing it, none has been spent yet. We've received half of it. We expect to receive the other, you know, second half of that, which is about $2.5 million by sometime in June. That's all I have on the dashboard. If anybody has any questions, certainly try to answer them for you. If not, I'll turn it over to Matt Daskel as far as the happenings. And then, we'll both be able to respond to any questions or comments you may have for us.
Good evening. Through you, Town Manager Lee and Council Chairperson. We've got a busy end of the January month here with a lot of events, so I'll try and keep them brief. And we'll have further information available online for those who need it. The Revenue Collector is reminding folks that the second installment of real estate taxes, personal property and motor vehicle supplemental bills are due January 1, 2022. 30 days to pay, so the last day to pay without interest will be February 1. Interest on the 2nd. The animal control bottle drive continues through the end of the month. Refundable cans and bottles can be left outside the pound at 29 Granger Lane. This was a fundraiser, again, for a dog in need of assistance. Princess, I believe, was her name. The municipal broadband interest survey, the town of Plainville launched an online broadband survey earlier last year. That continues online. We're always reminding folks to engage in that, and that would be reviewing the opportunity for a municipally-established broadband network. Further information's online. The Fire Marshal's Office is pleased to announce the winners